Judges, Vice Chair Napisafai, Commissioners Pam Treese and Commissioner Jerry Willey. We have a very full set of meetings today and agendas. Let's take care of the draft letters later so we can save some time. And move right into the next topic, the jail capacity study executive and leadership work group governing charters and membership.
About the agenda today, so apologies to Harrington. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. I'm Erin Calvert with County Administrative Office. I'm joined today by a couple of members of our team from the Sheriff's Office, John Steyer and Julie McLeod from the County Administrative Office as well. The purpose of today is to provide a jail capacity study project update for you. This work session will build upon the feedback and direction that we received at the January 30th. Jail Capacity Study Project and Timeline Presentation. And the plan is to update you on the request for the proposal timeline. And then walk you through the proposed drafts of the governing charters and membership for the Executive Steering Committee and the Leadership Team Work Groups. The policy question for your board today is whether we've accurately captured the right framework. And membership respective of each governing charter and see if there's any additional board direction. You might recognize this slide from the January presentation. We've placed an arrow over April where we are. Currently, and if you're comparing slides, we've also moved the activation of the Executive and Leadership Team Committees from the February-March slot into the April. Slots. After the last work session, the team met several times to incorporate board feedback into the RFP. And into the committee development. The request for proposal was finalized at the end of February. It was released in early March and it's actually due this Friday, February, or excuse me, April 5th by 3:00. And then throughout the month of April, we will be, we hope to complete scoring and interviews and then work toward awarding the contract. As this process is getting underway, we're also hoping to kick off the Executive and Leadership Team Work Groups later this. So before we dive into the proposed membership, I wanted to say a word about the draft charters. They are in your packet today. I think you are all aware that governing charters are best developed by the group that's working. On the project. And that's so that there's appropriate buy-in and feedback from the members of a particular project team. We wanted to share the starting framework and proposed membership that will help guide the project. It also seemed important to build the charters on shared understanding and the purpose of each work group, which were reviewed by your board on January 30th as well. Once we kick off the committees, the goal would be for the members to finalize their own charters within about 30 days of the initial meeting. So the Executive Steering Committee, you've seen this slide. The purpose is to provide policy direction, political support and strategic guidance for this initiative. This committee will give input into key decisions across all phases of the project. Know that you can all read, but just really briefly, it would include the Board Chair, the Sheriff, District Attorney, County Administrator. The Community Corrections Director, Health and Human Services Director, Facilities Fleet and Parks Director, Chief Financial Officer, our Presiding Judge. The Mayor of Hillsborough, the City Manager of Cornelius, Beaverton Chief of Police, Tiger Chief of Police. Our ESPD Chair, who's also the Vice Chair of our Public Safety Coordinating Council, a member from Central Cultural. A large business such as Nike, a small business in Hillsborough. And then I wanted to say a word about. This group, but actually both committees would be co-facilitated, co-facilitated by Under Sheriff John Cook and myself. And part of the reason for that is, as you're aware, often the Under Sheriff and an Assistant County Administrator might. Attend meetings on behalf of the Sheriff and the County Administrator and so. We will be flexible to attend both groups and it would also kind of keep a thread going between both of the member groups. Then the leadership team. The work group, the purpose of that group is to coordinate the overall project organization and strategic planning across all phases of the project. Including data collection and needs analysis prepared by the consultant. This group would provide subject matter expertise and recommendations to the Executive Steering Committee. So again, you can see many members from the Washington County Sheriff's Office, including the Chief Deputy, Jail Commander, Jail Lieutenant, Jail Programs Coordinator. The Business Operations Manager. We would invite the medical provider and the food service provider. To attend, then we'd have some assistant, the Assistant Director from Community Corrections, Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Manager, Facilities Capital Project Manager. Assistant Communications Officer, a member from Hillsborough Police, Sherwood Police. The Family Justice Center Executive Director, who's also the Public Safety Coordinating Council Chair. The Washington County Sheriff's Office Latino Advisory Commission Member and the Metropolitan Public Defender. And then you'll see again that Under Sheriff Cook and I would facilitate that group. We think that the groups balance. A good representative and a good mix of elected officials, county staff across many departments and subject matter expertise. City staff, including law enforcement, the courts, members from boards of commissions and community partners and local businesses. If given the go-ahead, the team would start making invitations and determine a meeting time for the work groups, again, to hopefully start in April. And then we understand, as we understand more about proposals and timing in the project. Also work to populate the work sessions so that your board is aware when we'll be coming back to you for updates and policy questions. And that is all I've prepared today, but I'm happy to answer questions on the charters, the RFP, the members. Any feedback that you have.
I didn't quite follow the coming back part. Is there a time target, month or a quarter for that?
Not well, that's what I think.
Could you just repeat what?
We need to populate that as we get into the groups and I think that we get more information from the proposal, the interview, the scoring, the award. And then when the committees begin to work a little bit more into the charter and what they're doing, then I think we'll know the timing to come back to your board. We'll know that we need to provide those updates when there's a good update to provide.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Who do you? Think might. Looking at somebody.
Look at it, John Steyer.
It's gonna be a consortium, I would think of consultants. So what would that look like? I'm not saying who, but. Who would, what kind of group would typically respond?
You have to come up to the mic, John.
Hi, I'm John Steyer. I'm the Business Manager for the Sheriff's Office. I think once the proposals come in, we'll know better what type of business might. Provide a proposal. We did have a pre-proposal conference. We had about, I think, three, three or so organizations that. Asked questions or at least tuned in to. Figure if we had questions or if there are other questions.
There wouldn't be a single consulting. I would think that this would be consortium of consultants. I mean, because they've got different aspects.
And I don't know. No more.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioner Fai?
Thank you, Chair. I have a great presentation, Erin. Nice to see you, John. I had a question about the executive membership composition. What led you all to decide to add Mayor of Hillsborough and then? Why not? Or how come Mayor of Beaverton isn't called out?
Yeah, you know, this is again, I emphasis this, it's our best guess in talking about getting the right balance of folks, so. One thing, we haven't talked anybody outside of, well, we benefit the mayor's meeting, yes, with the chair.
That's nobody.
Sorry, no. We haven't talked at large to the folks that are on, we haven't done the invitations yet because we wanted to wait for board feedback. So while there has been communication, where there's been presentation at the chair and mayor's meeting. And there was really good feedback from the mayors and the chair on buy-in on, you know, what balance of. Mayor or police, law enforcement representation. And so we talked a lot about that in our committee meetings. Trying to get staff expertise, elected official, community, like a wide breadth throughout the county. And so that was our best guess on, on balance of that. We may get folks that don't have time or capacity and we may have to go to a different.
Thank you, Erin.
So I'll, I'll go last. So thank you for these drafts. On the Executive Steering Committee makeup. The, I did note that Beaverton, Hillsborough and Tiger, through this proposal are represented. On the line that has ESPD Chair slash Vice Chair of PSCC, which is it, one, both?
The, the person, they're both. They're the same person right now.
So this isn't about people.
Right.
This is about positions. Are you looking for the ESPD Chair or are you looking for the Vice Chair? Our minds should not.
That's a good point. We weren't on the person. We were just noting that when we talked about both committees being an important representation in this. That's where we landed, but we can certainly separate, I think. You know, part of the goal of these committees as well is trying to make, have enough folks at the table. To contribute and have a wide depth and breadth of positions, but also knowing that you have to be able to manage a group to make a project move forward.
So towards that end, I think you need to have both there. There are seven different departments. So let's talk about balance. Okay. And also, what is Centro's role? What are you looking for?
A community, community member.
That's clear. Right? A community member is different than a nonprofit representative. And on the leadership team work group draft. I think you should clarify, is the Chief Deputy there for law enforcement or yet again another jail rep? That's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Probably both perspectives in this.
So this is a little too much inside baseball. Right? Jail Commander versus Lieutenant versus Programs Coordinator. You're, you're listing. You know, job titles versus what is it you're looking for? So I think. You would serve us well to have, this is fine for a slide. But you're trying to put together work groups that have different positions for representing different perspectives. Right? So. I'm pleased to see at least a couple of different police departments. Family Justice Center slash PSCC Chair, which is it you want?
Again, yeah, that's a good, I think, I think, yeah, we'll work on that.
So for the leadership teamwork group, this draft has 11 internal county folks, two city police, one nonprofit with FJC. The word balance has been used. I'm wondering, so the sheriff. As a Sheriff's Office Latino Advisory Committee. What is the role of just that one committee on this leadership group?
Yeah, and that was looking for another community member that might be familiar and still representing community interest.
I'm not impressed. I think we would be better served to have an open solicitation for community members. I'm really pleased to see public defenders. I was really glad to hear about a next step in terms of coming back to the board. Otherwise, we are dealing with black hole syndrome. On the draft charters for these groups. In, on the Executive Steering Committee, second paragraph, first sentence. That Washington, I think it's important background. Washington County Corrections Master Plan was published in 2007 and never revisited by the Board of County Commissioners. That is very important. For this committee and our public to know, because this board has been very present. With the new formation in 2019 to address the needs for the entire ecosystem of public safety. We have to tell that story. Nobody else is gonna give us credit for doing this hard work we are doing. The next, the last sentence, project will also evaluate. The project will continue to evaluate community. We've been doing this. Under purpose. The second sentence, they will give input into key decisions across all phases of the project. I would extend that sentence or suggest it be extended to make recommendations to the County Administrator and the Board of County Commissioners. It needs to be very clear, who are they doing this work for?
You can add that.
And we've already talked about the formation of the committee and why for these different positions for small businesses. I don't understand why it's restricted to just Hillsborough. Right? There are several of us on this board that hear about. Getting involvement from throughout our county and we have small businesses all over the place. I think this group also needs to have a grounding in terms of. The ethnic population. Of the adults in custody's as well as the bookings. Across the last five years at least. Broken out by which city. That's gonna be important awareness. For the leadership team charter, once again, a really sound draft. In the second paragraph, same point about the, the master plan and the very last sentence. I appreciated the human-centered needs. It's really great. And. Personally, I. I already asked for that. And these, I assume that the, these work group meetings are public meetings so that. Even if Board of Commissioner members want to. To sit in on a leadership team meeting, they can. I think it's a really great start. And we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Alrighty, whoo, I was afraid that would take longer, so yay, we can probably get to the letters before our 10 o'clock. We're moving right along to the ERP. Thank you Sheriff for being here. We're moving on to the ERP modernization project. This is another biggie. Welcome.
Morning, Chief.
Good morning.
Morning, Chair Harrington and Board. For the record, Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the ACAs. And I'm here to introduce this topic today. The CIO office has been really involved and this is an important project. It's not a project, an ITS project, this is a county project. And so Destiny and Luke will give you a great idea about what this project entails and how we're ensuring that it is a countywide project. So my role is the sponsor and so I'm really representing and ensuring that the County Administrative Office is fully involved, fully informed. And able to help make decisions throughout the process. So with that, I'll introduce Destiny Olavas. And Destiny is our security, and I always forget the exact security officer. Information Security Officer, but she's also the program manager for this important ERP project. And Luke Ross is our interim CIO. So I'll introduce both of them and I'm gonna kind of sit back and let them provide the information.
Morning. I'm excited to be here and be able to give you a status update on such an important project. So I, again, I'm the program manager for the Enterprise Resource Planning, the ERP Modernization Effort. And I'm gonna kick it off with what I need from the Board of County Commissioners. And the first one's very easy because we received approval, budget approval back in July of 2023 for this effort. And I'm gonna speak a little bit about where we're at with that budget estimate a little bit later. We need authorization. Well, we need to authorize the County Administration Office to enter contracts with Cognizant and Workday via a consent agenda. And that is sometime in mid-April. We're thinking we'll have the contracts wrapped up. We need our board to support, engage and encourage us throughout the entire project. This is a countywide project, as Marnie stated. It will impact everyone in the county in varying degrees and we all know that change is difficult. The county workforce will look to the board and leadership to help prioritize efforts. And the project team really hopes that this will be one of the top priorities for the county because we need countywide engagement to have a successful implementation. And then number four is administrative policy approval and we are aligning best practices with our policies. This is not something we need right now. But future support. Once we get those policies developed, then we will submit them to the board for approval. As far as the goals for the project, so this project will be implemented with a one-Washington-County approach. Even though ITS Finance and HR are most likely the most impacted by this project. Decisions will not be made in department silos. We are bringing everyone to the table to decide how to configure the best ERP for Washington County. We want to align finance and HR functional data, so we want to bring as much data as possible into the new ERP. I mentioned back in July, long ago, about our, our bolt-on solutions to keep our current ERP up and running. So we want to make sure that those solutions bring the data in to the new ERP for better reporting and data-driven decisions. We want to optimize business processes across Washington County. So an example of this is if ITS is submitting an invoice for payment. We want the same process to happen in HHS, in the Sheriff's Office, all throughout the county. We want to implement an ERP solution using out-of-the-box functionality, so configuration is fine. We want to meet our requirements for the county. But customization causes additional cost and IT maintenance overhead and we do not want that. We want to increase resiliency and business continuity. So having our ERP be cloud-hosted increases our ability of continuing business, such as paying our workforce, if an unfortunate event does happen. And then, as I mentioned before, we're, we are aligning our policies with best practice. So this is the exciting news, is that we, we did choose a vendor through the RFP. We had five viable proposals with three ERP recommendations. You may wonder, how did we get five proposals with three ERP vendors? We have what is called a Tier One and a Tier Two vendor. So Tier One vendors are the big players in the market, so much like Workday and Oracle. Traditionally, they do not implement their own solutions. Sometimes they do, but it's pretty rare. So they partner with other companies and they come in and customize the solution to meet the requirements. So in this case, Workday had three system implementers, Oracle had one. So a Tier Two vendor is like Tyler Technologies. They came in, they implement their own solution. So ultimately, we did choose Workday, so we're very excited about that. And the system implementer that we chose was Cognizant Workday Practice. And even though the three vendors who recommended Workday were fantastic, I'm sure that we would have been successful with them as well. What we really, really liked about Cognizant is they came in and they want to teach the county how to care and be for this ERP solution, which is so very important to us. Because after we go live, we don't want to have to rely on third-party support if we don't have to. So this is just a few things about Workday, the value that they bring to the table. I talked about Cognizant, so here's Workday. And we are really hoping that we get to tap into these efficiency gains. But the one thing I do want to share about Workday, which is very exciting to me and to the board, I'm sure. Is that they are going to help us collect data from our legacy ERP solution. And compare it against the efficiency gains that we get from Workday. And that'll be something that I share at the end of this project with the Board of County Commissioners. Lots of good things up there and I, I hope that we see that too. All right, as mentioned before, cost estimate. So when we were here in July, we estimated the cost of this effort to be $19 million. So it's still the same. There's no change to that. I put the expenditures to date through October through March 25th. We're at about $588,000. We're slightly under budget right now and it's only because we were targeting to kick off the project at the beginning of this year. But we found we had so many great vendors that we wanted to take the time and effort to really vet these vendors to find the best one for our, our needs. So if we had kicked off at the beginning of the year, then we would have had prorated subscription costs and. And probably paid some cost out to the system integrator at this point. Now, as far as the. As far as the total expenditures, people, people are our biggest area. So as you can see up at the top, we are estimating 13.5 million. And that is for back bills. So a lot of lessons learned and feedback that we received from our partner counties and cities and consultants. Is that we do not want our core project resources to be working their daily jobs and trying to implement the project at the same time. It causes burnout. So we were very careful in making sure that we had the appropriate budget for back bills. Then beyond that, the tools. So the ERP system, so that is Workday, is going to cost during the implementation period, $1.1 million. And that will also be the cost going forward on an annual basis. And then the final category is process, so our system integrator and decommissioning of our wizard solution, so that is $5 million. So calculating all of that up, that's the estimated budget of 19 billion. So project milestone, so we provided the RFP intent to award to Cognizant and Workday in January. We have been working very hard since that point on contract negotiations. So we're, we're still right in the middle of that, but we're hoping to wrap that up by mid-April. And as you could see up there, we knew that we needed to have a check-in with our board at that time as well. We said we would provide a status update, so that is what we're here to do. If we get the contract signed in April, then we will be kicking off the project in May. We'll be working on a project plan strategy with the vendor. And then August 2024 through March 2025, we will be configuring our ERP solution to meet our requirements for Washington County. Then March through August, we'll be testing. And then this is the exciting part, September through October of 2025, we'll be doing parallel testing. And the system implementer that we choose chose, they have a solution that actually compares the results of our legacy solution against Workday. And it'll come up with any differences, payroll differences or whatever that may be. And we will look into why we're coming up with that difference and we will rectify that. And then if all looks good, then in November, we will start our deployment activities and our target deployment date is December 12. And if that goes well, then we will switch on over into the warranty period. After that, our vendor will be on-site to make sure that we know how to conduct our daily operations.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. This is, it's a great presentation and I appreciate understanding what, what the flow's going to be and congratulations on choosing the vendor. That's, that's a big step. I, I've been through some of these in the past, in my past lives and my experience has been that there. There's a couple of reasons where things start to, start to fray and that is around unforeseen barriers. And which result in delays and then also in the acceptance of the new system as we move forward. So I guess, but, you know, when I, when I see one of these projects, I get a little nervous. But at the same time, you've laid it out in a way that makes, makes it very clear. I'm really happy to see the parallel testing piece. That's oftentimes a, a real gap between when, and causes the lack of acceptance. On the employee part, wanting to go back to, to the old way. I would ask that as you go through this process, that, that there's kind of almost like a blog. What, what's happening well, what's hap, what, you know, what may cause a delay so that there is an awareness level built? Not only for us, but for your. You know, what may cause a delay so that there is an awareness level built, not only for us, but for your user groups along the way.
I do want to add that we do have an organizational change management person who is on the project on the county side. And our vendor cognizant also has a representation that is going to guide us, Procy certified, so.
Great, thank you.
Like me, do we have a, a web page?
We do on Horizons.
That I all could.
I recognize that there's a web page there. It's a little different than a, a blog that is more for in internally focused. And it's like, no, we're, we've got this going on, but no, don't worry, we're doing this, this, or whatever. So that, there's a way to head off the acceptance issues.
And I think you mentioned something that is important for all of us to understand. And I'm not familiar with it, so, but it was on part of the answer that you were provided. And that was the org change management. Could you bring that to life a little bit more uh? About what, what all the employees are going to see from Horizons posts or what have you? Just, I have no idea what I'm asking about, but it, you're, you're saying it's a powerful thing.
So we know that this is going to be a change. We don't know in exactly which way it's going to be a change until we start working with um the implementer and uh the Workday solution. The change management consultant is bringing that subject matter expertise externally. And then as Destiny said, we have our internal staff to be paired as a team to be helping support the change management. Um, uh professionally, this is now my third E R P transition. And where the change management becomes challenging is um. There's a clear business purpose for not customizing a solution. And so looking to what is the best practice, how can we do things differently? And so it's working with departments or staff on the why and how this can help them in the long term. So a sh- maybe the short term pain has the long term gain. And working through that process and making sure it's thoughtful. So it's not just about the system, but there's still people that operate our systems. And then um, as Destiny indicated, we then have to address any policies or procedures that need to be updated. To make sure that we are modernizing our practice and our solutions.
So if I could just checkpoint that I'm understanding this right. In, in your timeline, then, the, the black color of doing the implementation, we've. Uh, I'll say more about this later, but you've done a really good job of communicating to all of us. The purpose of this project, where it's at, how you're going about it, so that there's no mystery. So if, if I'm understanding what you're describing correctly, isn't that's the big F? It sounds like you're going to keep us on that journey. And it's by virtue of this kind of recognition and, and what Commissioner Treese was asking about. Am I, am I, am I getting this right? Cause I've never done an E R P before.
Yes, and I want to maybe take you back to um when Ms. Calvert was presenting. And she said, once we have uh uh the vendor on board. Then we'll know more about what, how we need the board, so what support we need from the board, what policies we're going to update. It's just too early to be able to tell what are those checkpoints along the way, but we will be definitely coming back to you on this.
Um, Chair Harrington, just to add a little bit to the change management. We have a, a internal staff person. Role throughout this project is to ensure that we're bringing staff along. And so right now, one of the things he's doing is holding an, an open house every month. And we're getting that information out through our, our department directors, through um emails. And it's, what I've seen is over the last couple of months, three months, I think. It's been increasing in the number of people that are realizing this is happening and coming. And it's really an open forum that can ask any question. We can continue to explain what the project is, what they might see, what our goals and hopes are. Um, and then there has been a couple of posts to Horizon as we've had kind of major milestones along the way. But your idea about a blog is another opportunity.
Commissioner Treese, does all that sound appropriately realistic or?
Yes, it does, and my, my end goal is to, is to make sure that acceptance goes as smoothly as possible. Because that's, that, and I'm sure that that's your goal as well. So it sounds like you've got a lot of those bases covered.
Other commissioners?
I think the most revealing slide to me was uh slide five, where we're showing what um. The change, the thirty three percent reduction in time to complete or quarterly close and. And all of those things uh implied a couple of things there. One is that our system right now is uh, let's see. cumbersome. Antiquated, I don't know, but I mean, that was, those are significant change numbers. When you talk about um management of change, yeah, that's, that's gonna be, that's your first indicator that upcoming attraction. You've got a big job there, just to keep everybody on board. And I've gone through software transitions back in tax days, Roy, and I've been, you change tax systems, you go, oh my gosh. And there's always unintended consequences that happen in there, so I'm, I'm assuming you're anticipating those as well. But this is pretty exciting stuff, so if you can pull this off in, what, eighteen months?
On budget.
Uh, one, Clean Water Services is always a part of systems, they migrated to different platforms, as I understand. So they have nothing to do with this particular program, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, you were doing this.
No, I, I was thinking, I, I, I was trying to think through my head, no, either not. And I was wondering who they would point with, but I have friends.
Okay, I, I do that, you, okay.
I just want to clarify, um, we're on the Oracle system, which is the same system they're currently, that they're currently on. So Clean Water Services is looking for alternative solutions down the road. So we're very interested in Workday and how that goes for the county.
Please reach out.
We will, I wrote to the team, can we piggyback?
Never miss an opportunity.
My, my second question, you were citing about one million plus, you're guessing what might be the make it severe. Whenever you move from something you own to a subscription based service. Uh, and that's what you're doing when you go to the cloud, you know that. Really what the anticipated costs are really gonna be. I mean, you start having users come on and off, and you're, you're completely at the mercy of those software companies. I mean, they can change rates, they can do different things, and say, but uh, that program that you bought, that was your great back in twenty five, it doesn't work in twenty seven. So have you anticipated some sort of a cost in the future?
I don't know if you want to answer this, but uh, yeah, I was gonna say, uh, yeah, i- in general, I think we have worked to anticipate those costs. And also uh looking at multi-year agreements that we can project and forecast in the future. Um, you know, Tonya, or Tonya, anything to add to that?
So a follow up, as we don't have the information in front of us. Uh, we had um contracted with Barry Dunn, who's a leading consultant. And the um, kind of the preparation phase before going out to R F P. Um, Barry, part of Barry Dunn's analysis was really the decommissioning. So what is the gain from decommissioning some of the systems that we have? Cause there's even a carrying cost if they're not on the cloud. And so I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it is close to a net zero. You are right, when subscription base, you are at the mercy that there may be um increases in subscriptions over time. On the flip side, then with the subscription, you're getting the automatic annual updates um as part of that subscription. So it's, there, there's trade offs, and software does cost money, whether it's, you know, in, in-house um software or if it's out base.
Thank you, I, I just know what it costs that uh, we call them sibitas in accounting, but those sibitas have gotten to be very expensive. Certainly not what anybody anticipated, so if you're anticipating.
Yeah, and today we have a lot of on premise infrastructure and mini servers that support the Oracle uh as well as the ongoing maintenance. So there is definitely a, a, offsetting cost there, and also staff who have to manage that as well.
And we've worked very hard with county council to make sure there's a cap on those increases. So at least for the next ten years, we know what we'll be paying.
Yeah, this is, this is a primary concern for our office, is trying to make reasonable uh, you know, recognizing that there will be increases. But we are government interested, we accept outrageous changes every year, so we removed a lot of which that's, as you know. You're, you're at our mercy, basically.
Guard in your office, you, you have such a specialized uh set of needs. You store cases, you store a lot of things. Do they have modules, or is it, how, how would you use this system?
No, this is not, so, we're gonna, we, we have a separate computer system that.
Well, I understand your question, uh, Roy, and, and making sure that we, we monitor that. I think we all have to change our mindset a bit about the importance of the infrastructure of this type of system. And it's, it's very, things have changed so much that we are so dependent on this infrastructure. That I think long term into past ten years, we're gonna, we, we are gonna have to stay current, just like any other business. To make sure that we can address the needs of the, of the public. It becomes part of, uh, it, for me, it's no different than roads, than, you know, sewer systems, whatever it might be. We can't work without it. So I think we need to be looking into our future about what piece of our budgetary direction. Is going to be allocated to this type of uh uh maintenance of the system.
Commissioner, by anything?
Thank you, Chair, um, great presentation, this is a huge project. Quick question for you, what portion of the nineteen million is going to, in the R F P issue to the cognizant and Workday?
So Workday is the one point one million, that's the subscription cost. And cognizant is coming in a little less than five million dollars right now. We have assigned into the contract, and that's a one time cost.
Alright, um, so thank you very much, uh, there is a lot here. I started with uh recognizing that the prior topic and this topic are really big talk topics, right? They're biggies. And there is a huge moment to celebrate here for each of these projects. Their multi-year, they affect the organization and the community. Excuse me, the prior, they have each utilized a one Washington County approach. On the jail capacity study and expansion, we've got a lot of internal and community. That's one Washington County in the greater whole, right? In service to the whole community. For the E R P, you've really um engaged all of the departments that are reliant upon. These different systems that are necessary in order for us to provide our county government services to community. Thank you. You know, for, for the prior topic, that's maybe not even in the room anymore. These are huge. You accomplished a lot just in these early stages, right? You've really been courageous in this, and um, it's. I just wanted to make sure that, that we're all recognizing the moment. These are huge milestones for both of these projects, right? This board has been right there with you, brave, leaning into the courage of making sure. That we are successful as a county government in the way that we deliver our services to the community. Really big. I also appreciate the information that you've brought forward today. I had to do a little bit of refresh of my knowledge, and I'm not a hundred percent sure I got it quite right. So I did go back to the July information. And as I did so, um, because of my involvement with the board position with regard to the uh homelessness. And supportive housing services, I've been exposed to the metro auditor's perspective too. So we've got our own county auditor and the metro auditor. So I tried to wear that lens. And uh, so I just need to check a couple of things. So I did go back, uh, you talked about the budget approval in July of twenty twenty three. We did have a work session on July eleventh um that estimated the nineteen point seven, two year budget. Talked about ARPA and cost allocation during the funding. But the actual budget approval was that through the budgets that we've done?
Let me share a bit more context on that. Um, the um, the approval was to move forward with E R P. So I, I want to maybe refine the language a bit that was used, move forward with E R P. Then through the ARPA framework, we're using a portion of the revenue, uh, lost revenue for this project. Then at the January, I believe, round table, your board was presented with um three areas of focus. The uh misstep funding, which the board had determined um to bond um the previous misstep series. And then we were fortunate to have an increase in SIP dollars this last year, fifteen million. So your board had add, allocated that fifteen, gave thumbs up, I don't want to say it was for it, but gave thumbs up to allocate that fifteen million. To the gap for the critical facilities as well as E R P. So that's the funding review, because it's coming through a few different directions.
Yep, I've definitely, I and we have been on that journey with you a hundred percent. Got your back, got your front, got each side, okay? Um, I think it would be, because these are really big projects. The prior and this, I think it would be uh very useful to uh, for you, if you could. Just write up a paragraph and get that included into an updated packet. So it's, the answer that you've absolutely correctly described is formalized. For such an auditor pass look, right? That's, that's what they do.
We, so Chair, if I could add to that, just to that point, I will write that up to include um the direction you gave to staff at the January roundtable. So including the misstep and also the critical facility in this project.
Yes, uh, similarly on the modernization goals, uh, you may want to look back. There uh, I did compare them, there's a little bit of variance, not a problem. I think uh that might be another thing to really cement. It's because you've advanced, right? The way you've engaged throughout the organization is reflected in, in the goals today. And that's really important to do, but I want to make sure that um. That there's that recognition, that that July work session didn't set the goals in stone. You've advanced them, and, and I want to make sure that's clear um to, to other parties as well. Another part that I want to um recognize is that while. This E R P modernization project goes through this timeline, and it's a lot of work. We also, and you've, you did this in prior presentations as well. Uh, talked about how we have employees who will be continuing to deliver services. On what I'm starting to refer to as the legacy system. While all the, the new technology is put into place, the uh uh processes are documented. And implemented into the new system. So for all those employees that are continuing to deliver those services using the, the cumbersome. Clunky, whatever kind of words uh folks wanted to, to use, a huge thank you, right? And I, I just want to make sure that we continue to recognize uh that part of their jobs will. that part of their jobs will continue to be arduous while this exciting project is going on. I'm looking forward to the updates in later 2025 as you go through that parallel testing so that it's clear to me about what happens with that shift from the current practices to the new procedures. I'm not afraid of those changeover points. But I recognize that there's a lot of intentionality that goes into that. And I want to make sure that we, as a board, are able to support that for you and to recognize all of the care that the teams are putting in for a successful changeover. Does that seem reasonable? Once again, I'd say from everything I'm hearing from this board, we're really proud of Ms. Angie, of how you and the organization are going about both of these big projects and doing it with One Washington County approaches. Onward ho we go. Okay. Should we try and pull off the letters? Okay, I've gotten the signal from Board Clerk Moss. So we have two draft letters. Tracy, I don't know if you wanted to come up. These proposed letters are to thank our delegation for their support through the Congressional Fiscal Year 2024 Consolidated Appropriations Act, which President Biden has signed into law that support the Clean Water Services Western Washington County Sewer Rehabilitation Project. This will really, it's very important for solving bill and infiltration so that we can get better effectiveness of the infrastructure to cost-effectively continue to serve the community now and into the future with growth. Have board members had a chance to see the letters?
I can both.
Thank you.
You made it easy for us.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, of course, thank you.
Great, we'll get those signed and sent off. All righty, well, that takes care of one through three. I assume commissioners are comfortable with what's coming up on both the Housing Authority Board of Directors agenda as well as the regular business agendas? I should have checkpointed that earlier, sorry. Okay, well, we'll see everybody. It'll take us probably till 5:10 to get our business meetings going. Thank you, we'll see you back here with work session at a time certain 1 o'clock. Thank you.